That's the hot seat. It has like crosshairs to it.
We just had a discussion with Jim Goss. Tammy has to add the monthly reports, the monthly budget reports for the financial reports.
Mm-hmm.
Under his section, right here, he's under the finance section. So we need to add that to the agenda, just mention here when you're doing the agenda.
Financial reports?
Yeah, that would, um, we're gonna add that as item B, 4B, under finance. Keep going, next page. Monthly financial report right here. But he was thinking you want to mention at the beginning to get it added to the agenda. It's just for information, but Tammy's here to talk, and I'll just tell you about it because it's year end stuff. So the monthly budget report for fiscal year 2018 closeout. So where you want to, where you want to do it when you're starting the meeting is you want to put it here under agenda, approval of the agenda. You want to say, "We want to add item 4B, under finance." Just so Tammy can do a report, just a report, so there's no motion required.
And so Wendy, we get to this section, she'll come up to the mic?
Yeah, then, because he'll, he'll be in charge of the meeting at that point. So he'll call her up when he wants her to talk.
Okay.
But it's just information, so we don't have to change the, we don't have to change it publicly, but you can say it here, you want to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Yep. 4B.
We're, we say, "We just want to add item 4B to the..."
Okay, good evening, everyone, let's take our seats. Can I get a roll call, please?
Coward. Eisenman. Present. Esri.
Here.
Furtado. Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Ingram. King Taylor.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store. Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tinsley. Bashas Patti.
Here.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Rosales.
Here. Uh, before I move to approve the agenda, I wanted to make an addition on 4B, under finance. And that addition is the, uh, basically the monthly report for 2018, the clo- through the closeout of the year. Uh, this one will be done by Tammy, and hopefully, uh, once, uh, Goss takes, uh, control of his committee, he could add it on to 4B, monthly financial report, and that's for FYI, for your information. Uh, it was omitted when we did the agenda, so I just wanted to add that on to this agenda to be approved. So could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, moved by King, second by Furtado. Discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed, motion passes. Uh, approval of the minutes for, uh, February 12th, 2019. Moved by Bashas Patti, second by Coward. Discussion, corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Public participation. I see a lot of beautiful faces back there, but I don't see any sheets in front of me. Any public would like to come up to, to the mic and address this board, this body? Good. Welcome. Uh, one, a little tidbit of information, I was reminded by Patsy Petry that when you speak into the mic, speak into the mic clearly, because the last few meetings that we had, she could not hear, and others have complained that they cannot hear county board members speaking into the mic. So speak directly into the mic, make sure that the little red light is on, and is on, uh, so that we could appease our community and Patsy as well. So thank you for that little tidbit of information. Uh, board comments?
Uh, Steve? Um, I would like to note the passing of Mr. Richard Cridenear. Mr. Cridenear was a resident of the Champaign County Nursing Home that addressed this board on several occasions during public participation. Mr. Cridenear did not allow his disability to interfere with his participation in the political process, and our community is diminished with his passing.
Thank you for that note, Steve. Okay, now we move on to item number seven, Justice and Social Services, Kyle Patterson.
Thanks. Uh, for the first agenda item, we have the Regional Planning Commission's presentation on the youth reentry program. We have Jeremy Bell, uh, from RPC, if you wanted to take it away.
Absolutely, uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As he said, I'm Jeremy Bell, I am the coordinator for the young adult reentry program for RPC. Our mission is to provide the best services possible that the individual may need. Uh, of course, that doesn't, everyone doesn't have the same services and same needs and wants as everyone for this program, so it is up to us to provide those services that best fit the individual and for what that they want for themselves. Uh, program description, uh, this is a program that is designed to provide many services that contribute to the, the life educational and career goals to those that we serve. Uh, we also aim to connect other services in the community to better serve those in our program. Uh, the funding for this, uh, service comes from Department of Labor and Training and Administration grant, which I will talk about later. The approach is to serve those who have been affected by the justice system, uh, by being placed on probation, parole, or those who have simply been incarcerated, and those who live in high crime and high poverty areas in Champaign County. Uh, we look to make sure that they don't go back into the system as well. As you see up there, those are the services that we provide, and, and there are many services that are provided to anyone who wishes to be a part of this program. Uh, we provide educational services through Parkland College, such as GED, high school diploma programs, and secondary education. Uh, we also provide approved training, uh, programs and occupational services such as HVAC, welding, LPN, and RN programs, just to name a few. Uh, we help provide career placement, resume building, job readiness, placement, and professional etiquette, and other work services that are provided, uh, by the Worknet Center on Mattis as well. Um, I have three career planners who work to see if past offenses can be expunged uh, or sealed, as we work with the Land and Lincoln Legal Services. Uh, they also provide extensive case management to those who may need more than just intermittent contact from time to time, and this includes mentoring, uh, seeking other services that we may not be able to provide for the individual and assisting other needs as well that may come up or arise. Uh, to those who seek to take advantage of our program, there are other services that are available to them that you see on the screen. Uh, as I stated before, no person will need the exact same services, however, it will be up to the career planner and the individual to determine what services they may need. Uh, the areas that will be served, uh, we serve, uh, individuals who are in designated census tracts. As you see on the screen, it's a lot of numbers and it can be confusing, but these tracks show data from areas that are susceptible to high crime and high poverty areas in Champaign County. So to qualify, they have to be in certain census tracts all over Champaign County that you see, uh, above. Uh, also to qualify for this program, 18 to 24 years old is the ages that we are looking to serve, and they have to have past or present involvement in the justice system. With our DOL grant, we were awarded 1.5 million dollars to serve 188 people. Um, with that said, every service that we provide is no cost to the individual. Uh, we pro- we expect to provide many of the services that I mentioned before, uh, to keep, uh, everybody that we serve out of the justice system. Uh, we are looking to lower recidivism rate, which is the national average of 44%, and we're trying to get that down to 20 or below. Um, we understand that we need to reach these individuals quickly who are at risk as the recidivism rates statistically continue to go higher each passing year, and within five years, that number can go up to 75%. So people who have been released from, from prison, who have been incarcerated, within five years, the, the number goes higher and higher each year, uh, with ended up back in incarceration, incarceration. Uh, our referral process is fairly easy, and if you look in your folders, and I know some of you didn't get any, but, um, there is a referral form that is behind the community, uh, support letter that you can see in the front. Uh, anyone can, um, complete the form, you can either self-refer, or you can refer individuals that you think that would be a good fit for our program. Um, also enclosed is, um, a, a booklet for the individual to see what the program is about. Uh, we have many community partners that you see on the screen, and this list continues to grow. Um, I've been all over Champaign County trying to, um, meet with other agencies and, and other providers and, and people in the community to see how we can work together to, to better serve the individuals, so, um, I'm gonna continue to reach out and continue to work with other agencies as needed, uh, and, and I think that we all have the same goal, is to, to serve the people of Champaign County. And that concludes, uh, my presentation. Um, thank you for having me, I appreciate, uh, being able to come to you tonight and talk about it. Um, do you guys have any questions for me? Thank you.
How many, uh, uh, Tanisha, go ahead, you got a question, go ahead.
Um, I saw that the requirement was to be currently involved or previously involved in a criminal justice system.
Right.
Is there any opportunity or plans to help at-risk youths that have not yet been involved in the system?
Yeah, I, I get asked that question a lot. Um, I understand that we're role models in this community, um, especially for young black males, um, young black females. Um, we definitely do that. Uh, anywhere that we can go, such as the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, YWCA, any, any organization that works with the youth, uh, in, in the same areas that we're trying to provide services, we would gladly come and, and talk to, uh, those, those kids and their parents and, and do a presentation as, as needed. So yeah, we do focus on diversion as well.
Kyle, you have the floor, I'm sorry.
Hi, Jim.
Yeah, it was a little tough to tell from your census tracts, do, do you know, does that include the, uh, uh, Park Hills out at Henny Mohammed?
Oh, God, um, I don't know Champaign County that well. Um, I do know that a lot of those numbers were designated by the census, it was written in the grant, um, as areas that we serve. I, I'm not really sure if Mohammed falls in that category or not.
Okay, I think it's actually in the county, I believe, but, but I didn't know whether that, that was part of it as well.
Yeah, I understand Mohammed is in Champaign County, but...
No, I mean, the, the, the trailer park itself is in the county.
Oh, okay.
It's not in the Village of Mohammed.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Um, yeah, s- sorry if I missed this at the beginning, how long have you been operating this program?
We've been doing this for, uh, the end of December. Yeah, so it's fairly new.
Um, I'm on the board of the Highway Construction Careers Training Program over at Parkland, which is a, the semester-long feeder program into, uh, the building trades, like a pre-apprentice program. Is that one of the Parkland programs that you're working with?
So the programs that we are working with people with are, are programs that are, are hi- fast-growing, um, high-revenue programs. So healthcare system would be a great example, um, uh, carpentry or occupational training like that would be, I'm, I'm not sure if that is one of them.
Oh, yeah, so this is, yeah, the building, like, if you could get in on a trade, that's a, that's a decent job, right?
Okay.
And so the, it's, this is a pre-apprentice program, uh, doing some of the same stuff you're talking about, HVAC training, uh, some different equipment, operating training.
Then that would probably be a yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll email you too, the name of the director of that program, just so, so you can make sure, but yeah, that's a, it's a, the only pre-apprentice program we have in town, um, to, that's a direct feeder into the trades.
Yeah, and I didn't, uh, talk about this in, in the presentation, but, uh, we have, we're looking at a two-year span to get people in those programs and then get them out into the workforce, and then a year of follow-up after that. So that program that you're talking about is exactly what we're trying to put people in.
And it's funded by the Illinois Department of Transportation, and participants in the program get a stipend, uh, they get training, but they also get a stipend for participating in it.
And we give incentives for that, so people who complete those occupational programs, we offer an incentive for them to, to finish.
Um, also, the Chicago Federation of Labor has been doing some really good, um, initiatives around getting formerly incarcerated people involved in the building trades, um, with some really good success. So they might be a, they might have some ideas, too.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
This is, sounds like an awesome program, but since it is so new, how many do you have, how many do you have enrolled in it right now?
Right now, we have, I've had 41 referrals up to date. Um, current enrollment is 16. Um, I have 12 referrals that are still pending. Um, well, more than 12 that are still pending. Uh, currently, I have a 35% enrollment.
Okay, and then how many, is, do you have like a number that you're gonna have to cap, I mean, can you do this?
188 people who we're looking to, to put into the program.
Okay.
As enrollment goes. 188.
You were men- mentioning that you all try and help people that's at risk.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that risk mean that you have to be incarcerated, been incarcerated, or what do it mean?
There is a certain criteria that you have to meet, uh, for our grant, and that, um, uh, being in the justice system, being 18 to 24 years old, and living in the designated census tracts. Now, I do meet kids, for example, midnight basketball, that we volunteer, and we see many children that Pastor Comer will tell us that are at risk. And we do provide mentoring, and we do talk to these kids about, um, education and about, you know, conducting themselves in a certain way, understanding the pitfalls that are out there, so we do do that.
Are you working with the state of Illinois to get some certification or units, if, uh, they participate in your program?
Can you repeat that question, I'm sorry?
I know that we've had held programs in the past, that if you go through a series of training and programs, especially through the unions, construction, and vocational and technical education.
Okay.
That you could get state certification if you have so many units within a s- specific field. So if you're doing this training and moving them ahead, they will, you know, they need to get placed and pass the, the appropriate state exams in order to, to get into the field. But just to train to train, once you were gone after three years, and then they're back to where they started again, which is trying to get, you know, their certifications to become an apprentice, uh, in these fields.
Uh, that seems very complex, um, however, uh, that, no, that's okay, though, thank you. Um, as far as I know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to immediately get people into these programs, and, and having a follow-up of a year, I mean, that, that, those are things we could, we could visit to see where we go from there, because even if we can't help them, we want to refer them to people who can. So I don't necessarily have an answer for that, all I know is that if there's an opportunity for someone to better their lives, we're going to visit that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, how long you said the, um, program is funded, before the...
Program is funded for three years.
Three years.
So two years, and then a year of follow-up for everyone.
Okay, so, um, I used to do some of this line of work at, uh, Abandon Door Education and Care for You, you ever heard of them?
I have not.
Okay, so you may want to partner with that, I can give you some information.
Okay.
On the information about Care for You, because they deal with at-risk, at, within this age, uh, range, too, and people who have, uh, criminal background records, or, yeah, so we, we can look up.
Okay.
If possible, uh, at some point later, could you give us, uh, you had a, a map up on the screen with the census tracts and roughly where they were, uh, is there a way to get a hard copy of, uh, or a better map of that so that we can answer questions like, are, is a place we know in one of these census?
So what typically happens is when I get a referral, um, there is a website for the census, I look up that address.
Okay, so we can do this, too?
Yeah, 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 it's, it's in your, in your packet, and there, there is a, um, a web address that you can look up. Before you even send a referral, you can look to see if they're in one of these census tracts.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like to see, you know, referring to what Jim Goss said about, uh, the area out to the east of Mohammed, I used to work with the Mohammed Area Youth Club, and we had kids, I know they were part of the system, I didn't see them listed there in your list, but, you know, I want to check all of those, uh, census tracts.
Okay.
Some may have been from Seymour, so that might work, so, that'd be information I think would be helpful to everybody, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Um, how many people do you employ, approximately? You know, or, or how, how, how many, like, staff are involved with, with running this program?
On my team?
Yeah, just in running this program in general, if you have an idea.
So, so me and three others, so myself, and I have three career planners.
Okay, and, um, I, I guess, is there, you know, I, I know there are some programs in this community that explicitly work with, uh, you know, getting formerly incarcerated people to mentor, you know, people in the reentry programs. Are, are you doing that sort of work as well?
Uh, yeah, and, and we also work with other agencies such as Rosecrance, he's gonna come up and talk about this program probably later, but, um, we work with the Salvation Army as well, because what we exclude is, uh, sex offenses. And so we can't have anyone in our program due to the grant that has a, a, a sex offense. However, if we can't serve them, then we'll find someone who can, and we work with a lot of other agencies that can, you know, provide services that we can't, and Salvation Army is one of them.
Okay. Um, oh, yeah, and, and sort of one other unrelated question, you know, are there things that you, you know, need from the community? Uh, you know, in terms of, are, are you looking for people to come volunteer, or anything like that?
Are we looking for what?
You know, um, any resources from the community that would help your program?
Uh, just support, honestly, um, for me, I know I'm not from this community, and so we're trying to build that trust. Um, I, that's why I, I go to barber shops, and I go to salons, and I go to pastors, I go to churches, I go, I go to places where I know those folks have the trust, and so to be able to do that is just to have that support of people in the community to understand that we're genuine and that we are just trying to help these folks, that's it. And so that is why I like to collab with other agencies, that's why I like to talk to other people in the community so that we can just build that trust.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Um, I had a few, uh, it's, it lists under the, uh, components of your program, legal services.
Yes.
I think I mentioned, like, uh, food stamps and cash assistance, how, what is that exactly?
So, we assess the need of the individual. When it comes to food stamps, when it comes to TANF, when it comes to anything like that, we, we do have, uh, DHS connections that we can talk to, to, to get those services for, for that individual. And when it comes to our case management, our intensive case management, we take people to those, 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 those opportunities. So we do that. Um, in, in terms of legal services, we work with Land and Lincoln Legal Services to see if their, uh, offenses can be sealed or expunged, and so immediately when we meet with that person, we have them fill out an application, and we send it directly to Land and Lincoln Legal Services.
And, uh, what are your main referral sources?
It varies. Um, I have referral sources from, uh, probation, I have referral sources from drug court, I have referral sources from, uh, Rosecrance, I have referral sources from the Salvation Army. Anywhere in the community, we get referral sources from, so it's no specific referral source that we, we get referrals from.
And, uh, typically, when they're referred from probation or parole, are they mandated to participate?
They're not. Yeah, this, this is not, uh, mandated, this is not a diversion program that you're probably used to, such as drug court, um, but it, it's completely voluntary.
I know a lot of DOL grants you could go back and ask for renewal, do you know, is this one of those?
Ooh, that is not my domain. I, I, she's, she's back there if you want to ask her that, but, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Almost sees like three years would be what it would take to get something like this off the ground, yeah.
All right, uh, if you don't have any other questions, uh, thanks for coming up.
Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Next up, we have Rosecrance, doing their, uh, mid-annual report on the reentry program.
Uh, good evening, my name's, uh, Chris Gleason, Executive Director of Rosecrance Central Illinois.
Misty Bell, um, Rosecrance, uh, reentry program.
So, uh, we did not do a PowerPoint, but the, our re-, uh, mid-year report is in your board packets, and I just wanted to point out some of the highlights and, uh, some of the things that we've been doing, uh, since the beginning of, uh, this year, since July. Um, if you noticed in the report, in about March of 2018, one of our main referral sources was the Illinois Department of Corrections would send us a weekly list of people who would come back into the community, uh, for, um, out of, uh, parole, and they ceased that, that part of that, uh, progress, so when you start to look at some of our data, you'll notice we have some missing gaps, we've gone back all the way to, um, they lifted that ban, and we've gone all the way back to March to catch up on all of those, so some of, uh, just wanted to point that piece out. The purpose of the reentry council, if you, if you're unaware, is to do a couple of different things. One is to, uh, get referrals from Illinois Department of Corrections, um, and/or local, uh, for people coming back into the community that might need services and connect them to services. Uh, prior to, I would say about September, October of this year, we would generally get those, we'd make a phone call and send out packets. Um, what we did is we revamped that, because, um, I don't know how many of you, I get bailed that if I don't know where it's coming from, I generally just put it in the recycle pile and move on. Um, and so we readjusted that and, uh, took that to our reentry council to see how we could better serve, and that's one of the things I talked about in July, of, we wanted to get some people out on the ground to work with people. So started working, and Misty started working with our program, and, um, basically, how that happens now is we get the list, uh, we put a phone call out to them, and if we get a live answer, we get them connected right away. If we don't get, uh, someone to answer, we continue to follow up with them until we can, uh, close that out with them. Once we've contacted them, uh, what we basically do is begin to look at a service plan with them to see what needs they present that they might have, whether it be employment, housing, they need an ID, they need link, they need, uh, healthcare services, they need, uh, health services, behavioral health services, substitute services. And then, uh, Misty basically, uh, works with those until we resolve all the, the needs that they've identified. So it could be, we can resolve some of them in thirty days, some of them in ninety days, some of them beyond that. If you look at, um, so that's a that's one part of the reentry council. The other part of reentry is really convening all the resources in the community together in a council format. Uh, we actually made it more formal than it has been, created bylaws this year, uh, put an executive council together, and that executive council is really just to set the agenda for the monthly meetings and to make sure we're on track with our data and that we're following the bylaws of that. We meet monthly. We have about twenty-five different agencies that come together on a monthly basis to share resources, to share insight and data. RPC is part of that, healthcare consumers, the sheriff's department. Uh, we have county board members on there. We have Salvation Army. We have, um, different treatment providers of other services. We have a lot of local mentors and churches that come. We have first followers is part of our thing. So there's a lot of people involved in this reentry council. And what they do is help inform us of what other resources that we need to look at and how we can provide resources to other people as well. Uh, one of the things that we set out this year is to make sure that if people needed behavioral health services, that we would connect them instantly to services. Um, and so that happens pretty rapidly. Within twenty-four hours, we have people connected into services and at least started in the process. Um, and we use other partners, not only just Rosecrance. If if we can't serve them, we give them to somebody else who can serve them. So I was going to have Misty just go over some of the numbers. We've gone over it five times and I'm still a little confused, so. Misty's got a better handle.
Um, one thing to make note is that the recidivism data is a little bit different um, than the actual identified needs and linkages data. They're on two different fiscal year cycles. Um, and so the numbers may be slightly off. Um, and so I just continued that pattern. Um, so the recidivism data is from July to to basically June. Um, but the linkage identified needs and linkage data is for the entire year from January to December. Okay? Um, so at this point, um, we were able to retroactively go back and, um, begin to engage individuals for that gap from March all the way up until September. Um, and out of that, um, picking up from where the last, um, um, individual left off, we were able to engage about a hundred and thirty-six of those referrals. Um, I sat down with them and created service plans, which means I identified their needs, and then I actually linked them to those needs. So, um, that data that you see in there is the identified needs and linkage percentages. Um, they are on a yearly basis as well as a cumulative basis. Um, so you can see how successful we are. Um, I don't necessarily have those in front of me, but if you have any questions to any of that data, um, I can answer those questions for you. But the good thing about it is that you can see it and on an annual basis and compare it from year to year as well as from month to month. Um, and, um, during the monthly reentry council meeting, we look at that data. It was really helpful for me doing the case management aspect of the program because it helps me to focus my resources on things that are are maybe more crucial at that particular time. So, for example, um, individuals that come back into the community or reacclimated back into the community, it's very difficult for them to get a state ID at this point. Um, I'm not sure if a lot of individuals are aware, but, you know, I don't, I normally just go and renew my stuff and it only takes me five minutes. Um, but now in order to get a social security card, you need to identify, you have to be able to identify yourself. Um, and when individuals come out of the Department of Corrections and they don't have the proper ID, that ID that they give them will not work in society. It will not. They tell them it will. Um, and a lot of, um, the the documents that they may be able to get while incarcerated, sometimes they don't get once they get out. Okay? Um, and so the reality is, once they come back into the community, they have absolutely nothing. So I have to start from scratch. So, for example, to even start with the social security office, you have to identify who you are. You can't do that if you don't have a photo ID, a birth certificate or social security card. You can't get a birth certificate unless you're able to identify who you are, and if you don't have that, you can't get a birth certificate. So I have to start off if they have ever been in the hospital. And I have to go get a certified medical record, then go to the social security office, get them a social security card, wait for that social security card to come, then come to the county and then get their birth certificate, then take their birth certificate and their social security card to the DMV, and then they're able to get an ID. That's the first thing that I'm always having to do with all of our individuals that, um, um, come out and want to receive reentry services, and it's very cumbersome. And if they have to do this on their own, nine times out of ten, they get very discouraged and they don't go back. DMV does not play, and they do not do not, um, accept any type of documentation anymore. They do not accept Department of Human Services documentation link anymore. They want certified documentation because you have to go through the Homeland Security and make sure they're legit to have, um, IDs. So it's just that cumbersome now. And so, um, that just example of how cumbersome and detailed and time and and intuitive that particular process is. So we make sure they get, um, benefits, resources, which include those IDs, birth certificates, social security cards. We focus on housing. We also focus on employment. Um, and so individuals that sit on the reentry council help us to make sure that we link to those identified needs. So that's what the hundred and thirty-six, um, service plans were. And you can see how successful successful we were in those individual, um, identified needs and how we were able at the bottom to link them to those identified needs. The other aspect of the report focuses on recidivism. And so the recidivism data is basically a hundred individuals that I was able to capture for that particular fiscal year. Um, and out of that hundred, um, we are at four percent. So four individuals, and our definition of recidivism is basically if they have had a judgment within the three years of being released. Um, out of that, four individuals were convicted, um, and fourteen currently have a pending case. Um, and moving forward, what we would like to do is continue to meet as a reentry council um, and, um, basically improve on our services as well as fill in any gaps. So, for example, from the time I release or discharge a client to the time maybe I do some recidivism data, we probably need to focus on how we can do a little bit more robust follow up. So it's things like that, how we can improve, um, our program. Um, but we were able, like I said, to retroactively go back, pick up where it kind of left off and still make, you know, amazing, um, um, results.
Thank you, Misty. That's why Misty's here. But he does a great job of, I've never seen someone move, um, people through a system that's very complicated so quickly. And so, uh, what he has done, other people have started to replicate. So I think that's the power of the reentry council, because then we bring those things and say, here's the way that we're managing these resources and how can we help and we get other agencies and other people in the community to buy in and then help us with that process as well. That would be our midyear report at this point.
Any questions?
Sorry, I'm I'm trying to understand the recidivism statistics you said. So you you talked about, so, I mean, what I'm seeing when I look at this is, my understanding is is this right here is the recidivism, recidivism, recidivism data for, um, for the for the people who are engaged in your program, right? On this is on page five of your sheet. And then if I go over here to the non-engaged population, that's their citizen data for the community, for for people you contacted but didn't actually go through your program, right? And so it looks like, from what I'm seeing, and, you know, it's possible that I'm misinterpreting this, that the recidivism rate for people not engaged in your sys- in 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 the system is twenty-one percent, and for people engaged in the system is twenty-three percent, you know, varying from eighteen percent to people who were successful to twenty-seven percent for people who are partially successful to twenty percent who are unsuccessful in completing the goals of the service plan.
Um, let me, um, explain the difference between success, partial, and as well as failed. So basically, um, success, which means that they were able to, um, complete their service plan in its entirety. Um, partially, which means that they were able to be linked to some things but not all, and failed means that they didn't participate in any service plan. So that's what that means when it says successful, partial, or failed. Um, I calculate recidivism for both populations, the engaged as well as the not engaged.
Right.
Um, and so that means that for the not engaged, I'm dealing with a more larger population and I have to go to see if they actually have a judgment within the last three d- three years um, over the entire five-year cohort. Um, and and that's, I mean, the 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 data is just really the data. If they have a judgment, they have one. If they don't, they don't. So and then, but we don't involve, we don't calculate pending charges within that. So even though it's twenty-three percent for the non-engaged, it may potentially be much higher in three or four months because I have to go back and look to see if those pending charges actually, they they were sentenced.
Right, but but even if you look at like the year one cohort who finished your program in twenty sixteen, you see sort of, you know, comparable numbers. You see, in fact, you see a recidivism rate of twenty-six percent for both engaged and not engaged. So I just, you know, I'm I'm trying to understand the impact that this program is having on recidivism.
Actually, that recidivism number, and I can get you some better detail to that for reentry back into the community, is a pretty low number of, um, not when you look at this data, but overall bigger trends of communities that don't have reentry services and recidivism data into that, so we can draw that together for you. Because I think I I would look at it and say twenty-six percent is pretty high, that recid- uh, go back into the system. But from our recidivism data out of the criminal justice system is pretty low. And then that first, one is that that's the five-year cumulative total. So, you know, um, I would expect that our, those numbers would be higher. Twenty-three is is pretty low for me.
Yeah, I guess I'll, and this is the last thing I'll say, I I guess I would expect to see sort of a difference between the engaged and non-engaged populations.
Yeah, okay.
This really is often a tangent as opposed to recidivism, but I want to thank you for taking the time to point out the degree of difficulty for individuals that lose a driver's license or a social security card. In today's day and age where a lot of people seem to think that it is appropriate to require ID in order to vote, the ability to be able to have at least fifteen dollars from the times that I've looked to be able to order a copy of your driver's license. And the individual that I helped had no contact with the criminal justice system. He simply didn't have his driver's license. And they require that. So I don't think people fully understand what it takes in order to do that, and they don't understand the financial impact for some people. It strips them of the right to vote.
And on that note, too, if the individual doesn't have access to funds, we go ahead and we go ahead and pay for those so that they get an ID, because we know without that, they're not going to be able to do anything else.
Just sort of echo Steve's points. I was talking about the building trades earlier. Almost, not almost, every single building trade requires a driver's license. Like, Geraldo was talking earlier about the test. You can't even take the test if you don't, that's like a baseline requirement and is one of the biggest barriers to to entry into the trades.
Too often, we talk about re- uh, releasing and then releasing, uh, individuals into the community and have the community embrace the individual and have the family support needed for, uh, to continue, uh, basically advocating for the individual. Have you been in concert with or in discussion with housing, public housing, where they're not allowing these individuals to return home, return to their families, return to their communities, return to their churches within those communities because they don't have a place to live? Uh, I know that housing has a a clause which is the right to work. Uh, have you worked with housing in order to facilitate these needs that these individuals have once they're released and they're not able to return back home?
We do have the housing authority on the reentry council, and so when we run up against those, then we ask them to advocate for us, and they're part of that process, so, um, that's been really helpful. Um, I I can't say a hundred percent of the time that that they agree with maybe a hundred percent of where we're going, but we've probably gotten more people placed in housing than before.
Yeah, the thing that fascinates me is that it's a local policy.
Yeah.
It's not a federal policy, even though it's a federal, uh, program. So is there any way that, you know, perhaps this board or other boards could put pressure on public housing to, uh, alleviate some of those pressures so that we won't have this endless cycle or vicious cycle of reentry, uh, and going back and recidivism? I mean, I've gotten loads of letters and complaints regarding that one topic, that one issue. And I know now a city council in Champaign is going to address some of those issues that, you know, uh, about profiling in their city council. So I was just wondering.
That's something I'll bring back to the reentry council, too, and see what we get, what support we need.
Yeah, I mean, we could continue to do the right thing, but if we don't change what we're doing and then it's still going to produce the same results.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Just quickly, um, thank you for your presentation and, uh, Misty, um, especially for your hard work. I know that you spend a lot of time doing this. I don't know how much time you spend outside your normal work hours chasing some of these things down. Uh, but I think it does mean a lot. I think there are a lot of people on the reentry board uh, because of that ID, which has been an issue for years. Apparently, no matter how many legislators we talk to, we can't get this fixed. But it is about bringing people back in the community and getting them connected to these resources, including Medicaid and those things. Without that ID, that's that's not possible. The issue of housing is still an issue. Um, the philosophy of housing has changed with the new new director um, in our discussions with them. So Mr. Norton has done a little bit of a better job. Um, yeah, housing will always be a problem because not only do people that we want to support with this program need housing, but other people in the community do this, what I'll put a stress on housing. So continue to do that, but push for more space. But, um, anyway, thank you for your presentation.
And I just actually understood his question, and I just looked at the data. So when you look at the data cumulative, you may not see a huge difference. Um, and I'm a data analyst. I'm part-time faculty at Parkland, so I teach math. And so when I look at your cohort five and I compare the two, we have zero percent recidivism in cohort five compared to the non-engaged of the four percent for the non-engaged. So, I mean, when you look at it from a a individual basis versus a collective basis, there is a difference and we are making an impact. Um, unfortunately, when you look at it collectively, sometimes when you look at it from a a global standpoint, sometimes the data looks a little skewed because it's cumulative.
Yeah, you know, real quick, so I just want to commend you guys for coming out tonight, you and your group back there in the back, which is a good thing. Um, that's one reason why I got off into politics, to invest into people's lives. And, um, I'm here for you, um, whether with the board or without the board. And I'm serious about that. So stay in touch. I know you guys back there. I see you. I'm here for you. Okay? Amen.
Do we also have any questions? All right, I had a few. Um, it said that you guys have collaborated with Parkland College. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes. Best presentation I've ever given.
Sure. Um, so, um, part of the identified needs that we do in the screening is, um, education. So, um, depending on what their conviction is, um, because I have to do detailed research depending on what they're, what they were actually convicted of, um, we partner not only with Parkland College, but also the Urbana Adult Education if they want to receive GED. So I have individuals that I've worked with, um, that I've either referred to to Wanda Nix, uh, which is over the, um, adult GED program at Parkland, um, and she's gotten them into Parkland, um, to work on. um to work on, you know, um either receiving their GED. Um, if they want to continue post-secondary education, um, that's a little different. Um, because one, we need to make sure they're still eligible to receive federal money. So um, I just had one case um that was um, he was placed out of Cook County into Champaign County. Um, and we were able to go in and I actually sat down with him to complete his FAFSA. So he was el- so he can be eligible to go back to school for the next academic year. So being faculty, I understand the backend process of how to at least get funds so that you can go back to college, um, if you, you know, miss that opportunity. But it also depends on two, um, if they've used all their federal money and where they are. So, you know, it 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 really depends on a case-by-case basis, but we do partner with those two organizations. It's probably a little bit more quicker for them to get into their Urbana Adult Education because they have funds, they can easily enroll them in depending on what time of the year. They do it twice a year or three times a year. Um, but if they've actually been convicted or a sex offender, that opportunity does not exist at their Urbana Adult Ed because of the individuals that are trying to get a GED that are underage. So I can't expose them to that, so.
And can you speak to, what is the uh legal impact of criminal history on uh FAFSA qualifications?
Um, actu- um, actually, um, they do not ask about that on on the application. So um, honestly, I really don't know, I haven't researched that. But that's an excellent question, now you have piqued my interest. So now I I am going to actually um talk some to the, to some individuals to see if that is an impact or if it isn't an impact, but they don't ask you that question. Um, all it is, it doesn't ask you if you file taxes and your financial situation. Um, and then they'll look to see if you've ever attended college, you didn't attend college, and if you file taxes to depend on if you're eligible for grant money.
Um, it mentions in the report that uh, I think it was from March to December, there wasn't a program coordinator, um, and you guys had to sort of improvise once you were hired on. Has it had any impact on the um, the program for the year?
You know, I I I don't think so because I took over that role of making sure, trying to manage some of that back into the community and and staying in touch with the reentry and getting that going, and so that really became my job, and so I found, you know, somebody in there. So we didn't leave it abandoned, and part of that process was IODC cut us off. So there was some of that. So we we focused on getting the program back into a structure setting and really focused on getting more people at the Reentry Council and and focused on those issues.
Thanks, is there any last questions? All right, thanks a lot for coming out.
Thank you all.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is um approval of intent to renew reentry program contract with Rose Grants for the term July one, twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion? Uh, Mr. Rosales, uh, second, Mr. Store, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, ooh, sorry.
Sorry, Kyle, um, I I, you guys know me, I'm a numbers guy. Uh, I appreciate everything that uh they've done here. Uh, as a lot of you know, four or five years ago, I probably wasn't in favor of the reentry. Uh, I know Mr. McGuire and I've had several discussions earlier in my career here. But I, we got one big thing hanging over our head, and I probably should be asking Tammy. If something goes south on our main headache, where's our budget going to be at this summer?
So for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we have budgeted for July through December to fund the reentry program. Um, that that's a fifty thousand dollar investment.
Thank you, that that was my own concern, so.
Any others? Right, seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes. Uh, next we have our monthly reports from Animal Control, Emergency Management Agency, Head Start, Public Defender, Probation and Court Services, uh, those will be placed on file. For other business, we have the semi-annual review of the closed session minutes. And it's my understanding, uh, sorry, Mr. Esri.
I move to open the minutes of June sixth, two thousand and five, and keep the rest of the closed session minutes closed as per the state's attorney's office.
Esri, do we have to go into a closed session to review, to review closed session minutes to approve those?
No, not if we're just opening it, no, we don't, we don't have to do that.
Is there a second?
I mean, I, I guess, if you don't mind, Kyle, uh, um, I guess we could somewhat delay this. I know at the facilities and at E-Luck, we had a copy of those minutes to let the members actually look at them.
I have a copy here.
But it would take a long, I don't know if that's very practical tonight to let everybody kind of peruse those to, you know, kind of see what are in those minutes, but personally, I mean, Kay does have a copy, she says, but um.
The minutes they're releasing have to do with the Nursing Home Administration search in two thousand and five.
Okay, thank you, Kay.
So they were reviewed by Julia's office and the recommendation is to uh go ahead and open them?
Yeah, as per the package, to open that one.
And the minutes are for June sixth.
Thank you.
Second.
Pranjul, second, uh, any discussion?
Uh, I'll I'll just point out that we could, if we wanted to defer this uh till later in the meeting, I think, and pass them around if people want to take a look. If people want, I'll make that motion, I guess, if people want to do that, and if I get a second minute.
Chris.
Just a motion and a second? Kyle?
Pranjul, you move to-
So so I moved to, I forget exactly what the parliamentary thing is, the the table, uh, until later in the meeting. Uh, maybe we can just put it under, like, uh, other bit, under item X.
Uh, do you have any discussion of that? All is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, uh, so that will be tabled. Um, and that, uh, we have Chair's report, uh, I don't have a Chair's report, and designated designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda, that would be uh, A, three? All right, and that is it for Justice.
Thank you very much, uh, Board Member Patterson. Charles Young, Policy Personnel and Appointments. Okay, thank you Chair Rosales. Um, one, the appointments under new bus- under new business, appointment and recommendation under the county executive appointment. A, the county of execu- executive is recommending Colton Allen to um Union, number three, Drainers District of South Homer in Sydney. One, an expired term ending eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Who was that, who moved it? John Recker, you moved it? Can I get a second? Second, uh, is a stand, I'm learning these names, any discussions? Well, I have something to say. So as um Policy Chair, I feel there's a need for me to be at some of these appointments and to vary the process because um I like to see uh who is it being, who's being appointed? And um, and perhaps see all the applicants as well, and not just the paperwork. So that's just my thought. Yeah. Any comments? Darlene, any thoughts? None at all, okay? Keep that in mind, there might be a trust issue with me. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion pass. Two, county clerk, A, February twenty nineteen report, we accepted this report and put it on file. Three, county executive, A, monthly HR report, February twenty nineteen, we accepted this report and put it on file. Okay, other business, semi-annual review of closed session minutes. Geraldo, Chair, with a, do I motion or what, any thoughts? Okay.
Second.
Well, I'll I'll move to, as per the state's attorney's um recommendation, retain all closed session minutes as closed.
Okay, forget his name. What's your name? Aaron, okay, first, and Pon- Ponjul, second motion, right? Any discussions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Okay, there we go. Um, C, Chair Report, one, appointment expiring April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, various fire protection district. And D, the only item that goes on the consent agenda is A one A. This conclude my part, and I yield back to you Chair.
Thank you very much for the report. Uh, next we'll move into Finance, uh, Board Member Gos.
Thank you Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, give a shout out to Patsy Petrie. So if she's listening to this, she'll see that I'm actually talking into the microphone. Yeah, Finance, number A, and A one under new business, Budget Amendment, Budget Transfer nineteen dash zero 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 one, Fund zero eight zero General Corporate to Departments zero seven five, General County and zero one six Administrative Services. The total amount is sixty thousand. The reason is to transfer request to utilize appropriation for the ERP budgeted in two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen in order to hire a project manager to assist the county with needs and requirements assessments for the RFP development and to be a project lead oversight. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second, Mr. Thorson, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item B, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 one two, Fund zero eight zero General Corporate to Department zero thirty-six, Public Defender. And increased appropriations, five hundred dollars, increased revenue, none, it's from the fund balance. The reason is that this is an insurance reimbursement for a television damaged in two thousand and eighteen, was received in January two thousand and nineteen and posted to the two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget due to the date of the damage. Request to use the reimbursement received and posted to the fiscal two thousand and eighteen budget to replace the television in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingram, is there a second? Mr. Vastaspati, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item C, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 one three, Fund zero eight zero General Corporate, Department zero one zero County Board, increased appropriations a hundred and fifty dollars, increased revenue a hundred and fifty dollars. The reason is to receive the UCCI reimbursement for the hotel stay by county board members to attend training in Springfield, Illinois on one twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Is there such a motion? King Taylor, second, Young, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item D, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 one five, Fund zero eight one Nursing Home, Department four one zero Administrative, increased appropriations two hundred and eighty-seven thousand fifty-two dollars, increased revenue, none, it's from the fund balance. Reason is to appropriate for payment of nursing home employees' benefit, time and management retention bonuses to be included on the last paycheck from the county following the sale of the home. Is there such a motion? King Taylor, second, Mr. Thorson, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item E, Budget Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 one six, Fund zero eight zero General Corporate, Department zero thirty-six, Public Defender, increased appropriations thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars, increased revenue, none, from the fund balance. The reason is to increase the Public Defender Attorney salaries to be equitable with the s- the attorneys in the state's attorney's office based on comparable workloads, time admitted to the bar and time in service. Is there such a motion? Mr. Ingram, is there a second? King Taylor, Janie is here if we've got questions. Judge DeFonis is here if we have questions. Any discussion? Mr. Store.
What is the uh, uh, hour, the, the, what was the difference in hourly rate? But I think I saw some, something, but it kind of escapes me. Should be on page thirty-four, thirty-five.
It works out to a little over two dol- like about two fifty per, there's eight, eight people um for a total increase of twenty dollars and forty-eight cents per hour. So it's about two fifty per person on average. I don't know how that works out between, you know, how that's leveled out.
It really, it really varied amongst the the level of the attorneys. So their time in service, their their amount of hours since, or when they passed, since they passed the bar. So it's a varied schedule, but it was designed to match up to the state's attorney's office.
Thank you, it sounds like a good idea to me.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, item F, Budget Amendment eighteen dash zero 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 eighty-seven, Fund one oh one, MHB Development Disabilities Board, Silla Facilities, Department zero fifty-four, Silla Project, increased appropriations of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, increased revenue forty-nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. The reason to cover the fiscal eight, year eighteen budget shortages in unanticipated roof repair. Is there such a motion? Mr. Store, second, Mr. Patterson, discussion. Mr. Vastaspati.
Uh, I I guess I see that the rent is going up, is that because we're going to be able to rent out more of the facility or because the rent, we're increasing the rent?
I think, I think it was actually, if I remember right in our discussion, it was they will be able to rent it for more in the future.
That that's great.
And there was a small, there was a small return there for UCSD. Can you, can you help us with that? Thanks Lynn. Sorry, I didn't see you sitting there.
Oh, that's okay, thank you, and I'm sorry if I go on too long, signal me. So there are two, two issues, one was obviously the roof repair, and that is something that um, Deb Bucy and Tammy Ogden helped us with this year, so for the two thousand and nineteen budget, we've actually budgeted for things like surprises that should happen in a home. So so I don't, I hope that we don't have a problem like that in two thousand and nineteen, but we weren't expecting it in two thousand and eighteen. The other issue is um, we did not budget enough for the rent, and that's because they also pay the sanitary district bill and out of the rent line, and that will continue to be that way. Um, similarly, I believe we put enough money into the budget for this year, but by accident. So I think we don't really want to collect a whole lot of rent because the residents are people with significant disabilities and very low income. So I've even been trying to negotiate lower rent. But anyway, that's for this year or next, but those are the reasons that we ended up with this budget short- Those are the reasons that we ended up with this budget shortfall this year. And I apologize, Tammy Ogden has got me on the right path now for planning to spend a little bit more.
She keeps us all on the, on the up and up. Other questions while Lynn's here, if we have any? Thanks, Lynn, appreciate it. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Uh, Item Two, the, the Treasurer Monthly Reports for December and January are now on the website. Um, we have Item B Resolution, authorizing the disbursement of funds on defaulted contract for mobile home tax sale. Permanent parcel number 30-054-0054. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, is there a second? Mr. Harper, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Auditor, the monthly reports just got on the website, I believe, today? Yesterday? So those are there, and we will accept those. Um, under the County Executive, we have a request for reimbursement of travel expense by county board member Arang Coward for mileage to attend the UCCI training in Springfield, Illinois on January 28th, 2019. Is there such a motion? Mr. Store, second, Mr. Young, discussion. This is mileage for the trip. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, Item B, which is what we added at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like to call up Tammy Ogden to go through this month's report.
You should have a copy of the, um, final 2018 report at your spot. Um, rather than go through that report, I've prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation. This is the last 2018 budget report that you will see from me, although it is unaudited, so there could be some minor changes, um, to this, to these numbers. The comparisons that I will be making tonight will be comparisons to the originally approved fiscal year 2018 budget. So starting with the impacts to revenues. We've been talking about most of these all year long. Um, so I will just, as I said, briefly kind of go over them. Um, 2018 resulted in a strong real estate market, and so that ended up in net increased revenue for revenue stamps of $199,000. Revenue stamps are $1.50 per every $1,000 in, uh, real estate sales. And so in 2018, again, there was a strong market, and, um, this was also driven by several, uh, large, um, commercial transactions that occurred as well. In 2019, we also saw, um, a strong economy, which resulted in, uh, increases in sales tax over the budget. The combination of the one cent and the quarter cent, sales tax revenues exceeded budget by $227,000 total. The one cent came in at 6.3% growth over fiscal year 2017. And I like to remind the board that our top 10 taxpayers for the county's one cent sales tax revenue, um, make up a significant portion of those, um, total revenues. In 2018, those top 10 taxpayers represented 62% of total revenue. So the loss of one of those taxpayers can have a significant impact on this revenue source. The quarter cent revenue was a 3.6% increase over fiscal year 2017. And the last time that the county saw, um, growth in this revenue stream of greater than 3% was in 2012. Personal property replacement taxes, which are basically a surcharge on, um, the income of partnerships and corporations. This is collected by the state, distributed to the county and other local governments. Um, the Illinois Department of Revenue actually provides, A, an estimate for these revenues for each of the local government entities, including, um, community colleges and, um, as I said, other, um, local government entities. And in fiscal year 2018, we ended up bringing in $90,000 more than budgeted. And the Illinois Department of Revenue has explained that this is due to, um, one-time changes in the federal income tax laws. So not something that we should anticipate, um, seeing in future fiscal years. Yes?
Before you get too far down, did you say the quarter cent sales tax was a 3.6% difference?
3.6% increase over fiscal year 2017.
Oh, no, okay, not from the budget variance, okay, sorry.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, thanks, sorry about that.
Was there another question? So used tax revenues were $118,000 over budget, and this is related to strong e-commerce sales. And also, we have kind of briefly discussed the Wayfair decision and the potential impact that this might have on the budget. We did not include additional revenues in the fiscal year 2018 or 2019 budget just because of the uncertainty of, um, what kind of additional revenue this actually would generate. The Illinois Municipal League has estimated that, um, we may be able to expect about 10 cents per capita per month for this revenue source. So that's a little under $40,000 for Champaign County. But again, in fiscal year 2018, um, this became effective October 1st. And so, um, the Department of Revenue began collecting, uh, these used taxes for, uh, entities outside of Illinois that are selling products to, uh, Illinois, um, consumers to be used in Illinois. And, um, I know they were required October 1st to have that implemented if they met certain standards, but some, um, e-commerce vendors actually implemented early. So part of that is probably, uh, the result of these, um, increases, but not, you know, a small fraction of that, 118,000. And then we have also talked about all-year-long, um, interest, uh, income coming in over budget. This is like a 250% increase, I think, over fiscal year 2017. So for income tax, we actually, um, brought in $96,000 less than budget, and this was due to the legislature's decision to extend the income tax cut. Um, initially, that cut was implemented at 10%. It was supposed to be a one-time cut. And so, um, we had prepared the budget for that cut to end, and the cut didn't end. It was extended for another year at 5%. So that's part of the reason for this, um, deficit to the budget. I will also let you know, uh, for fiscal year, state fiscal year 2020, that the governor's, uh, budget book proposes that the 5% cut remain. Um, it is still yet to be determined what the legislature will do.
On that, I forget, did we budget for the cut to remain?
No. Well, we budgeted for the 5% cut, um, through June of 2019, but then not an extension of it after that. And so, um, continuing to talk about revenue impacts, uh, state and local reimbursement lines for AOIC and Support Enforcement, this is something we haven't talked about because this just occurred in February. Um, AOIC, which is the Administrative Office of Illinois Courts, reimburses the county for a portion of probation and court services salaries. And so, there was actually an early distribution of, um, those revenues. Normally, they're not received, and, and I believe that was for the month of July. Um, we normally wouldn't expect to see those revenues until March. However, they were received in February, and therefore were required to post them to the fiscal year 2018 budget. So that was about $185,000. Um, for Support Enforcement, which is the Child Support Enforcement, um, program that the State's Attorneys have, or State's Attorney's Office has, um, I think that was about $22,000 that we received, um, early. So we actually got 13 months of reimbursement, um, that were posted to the fiscal year 2018 budget. So this early receipt of those revenues is good for fiscal year 2018 fund balance. Um, but you should be aware that there could be an impact then, um, in 2019, depending on whether the state continues with that, uh, distribution of payment schedule. And then the City of Champaign notified the county in September, um, that it would be, September of 2018, that it would be receiving an additional surplus TIF distribution for the downtown TIF. So we had not budgeted for that because we had been advised that, um, our final distribution would be in 2017. So it was a nice surprise to, to get a check for $78,000. And then fees and fines, of course, we've been talking about all year long, and where these numbers ended up lying are that fees came in $167,000 under budget, although, um, the fiscal year 2018 numbers were flat against the 2017 numbers. And fines came in over budget, um, by about $100,000. And this, um, in looking back at prior fiscal years is consistent with fiscal year 2016 revenues, um, but significantly lower than historical averages. For expenditure impacts, um, personnel lines, which would include the, um, wages and health insurance lines, we will see, uh, savings of $547,000. Um, a large portion of this was due to health insurance savings. Um, part of that is, was under utilization of health insurance by employees. As many of you know, we changed health insurance providers in 2018. Um, and so some employees that were double-covered chose not to continue, you know, their additional coverage of health insurance. And some employees moved to other plans, either a spouse plan, or I think we had some employees that even moved to, um, some community care plans that were offered in the community. For commodities, um, the $324,000 increase is directly tied to the increased revenues in, um, document stamps. So, and I think I didn't cover this earlier, but of that $1.50 that the county collects on every $1,000 in sales, we have to distribute $1 back to the state of Illinois and get to keep 50 cents. Underspending in services line was a total of three, all of the services line was a total of $341,000. And then, um, transfers to the nursing home totaled $2.9 million. Um, this includes, uh, loan forgiveness for two of the loans, uh, the $226,000 boiler loan, the, um, two $250,000, or we forgave them at the same times, the $500,000 cash loans. And then also, um, three transfers, um, one that was approximately $90,000, one that was $100,000, and then, um, the large one at the end of the fiscal year to pay the accounts payable, the 1.98 million. So again, I just want to, um, state that these numbers are subject to audit adjustments. Um, projected revenue for 2018 is $37.9 million. Expenditure, $39.3 million for a revenue-to-expenditure difference of negative $1.34 million. And, um, you know, largely driven by the end of the fiscal year transfer to the nursing home, the 1.98 million. That translates to a fund balance of $3.2 million, which, um, as a percentage of the 2018 expenditure budget is 8.2%. And as a beginning fund balance of, um, a percentage of the 2019 budget is 7.9%.
What, what is our requirement again?
Our minimum.
Our fiscal policy.
Our, our minimum, um, fund balance recommendation is 12.5%, with a target of 16.7%. And so, um, I, I'll go ahead and speak to that a little bit because, um, I figured I would get questions about, um, what it looks like when we are able to reimburse the county for the 1.98 million upon the sale of the home. And so, if you remember, the 2019 budget was prepared with some additional revenues that may or may not come to fruition. Um, one of those was about $480,000 in property taxes associated with, uh, potentially favorable ruling in the hospital property tax case. And the other was about 300, I think, $75,000 for, um, services that had been provided to the nursing home by county departments in prior fiscal years. And, um, so if I take those additional revenues out, because we did not also budget expenditure for those, and, um, using the ending fund balance for fiscal year 2018, anticipated revenues and budgeted expenditures are, um, and with repayment of the 1.98 million, uh, the fund balance projection, very early in fiscal year 2019, for the end of fiscal year 2019, is 12.6%. Obviously, there will be many impacts to the budget throughout this fiscal year that will impact that number.
Questions for Tammy? Aaron?
I was just gonna make a couple comments, I guess, on the projected ending fund balance. That 8.2%, that's only 29 days roughly of total budget for running this, if you just average it out for the year. So we've only got about a month's worth, and if you just put it towards, um, the personnel, all of the personnel, the way I figure, it looks like about 46 days. So that's not a lot of, I guess, I mean, gen, the general fund is our rainy day fund. So should the proverbial, you know what, hit the fan, there's not a lot there, folks.
Other questions or comments? Thanks, Tammy, appreciate it. Okay, semi-annual review of closed session minutes, there are none ripe for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to retain all closed session minutes as closed as per the State's Attorney's Office's recommendation.
Seconded by Ms. Fortato, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, I, Chair's reports, I have none. Um, designation, designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda. Nine, 1A, B, C, E, and F. Item Two, B. And Item Four, C. Are there any additions to that? Oh, sorry. Anjel, thank you, 4A. I put a C beside it every time, and that's why, it's that, I wrote 4C. Any other corrections? It's not under.
That's not under financing.
Mr. Chair, I, I relinquish the microphone to you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Goss. Uh, there is a memorandum on your desk, um, by, that was provided to you by the County Exec. Uh, the aforementioned, uh, procedures for making motions at the board. This was emailed to you, and this is your hard copy. I know that it was backed by popular demand. So now you have it in hand, and we could begin to move forward. Thank you very much, Darlene, for drafting this. Pam Prangil. No, not yet. What was that? Oh, okay. Go ahead, make your, yes, please.
Yeah, I, I move to take from the table, Item, uh, 7B1, uh, the semi-annual review of closed session minutes from Justice and Social Services.
Could I get a second? Uh, Chris, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Prangil, for reminding me. Hey, you, you want to move the second item?
That, we don't, do we need another motion? I can make another motion, but since, I'll just go ahead and move to, I'll go ahead and redo it, to move, move to. I can make another motion, but since, I'll just go ahead and move to, I'll go ahead and redo it, to move, move to reopen, or open, not reopen, open the June sixth, two thousand and five minutes as per the state's attorney's office's recommendation and retain all other closed session minutes as closed.
Could I get a second by Pranjal? Thank you, Aaron. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your contribution. Are there any further discussions, comments? Well, I call this meeting to be adjourned. Thank you.